Much later than I was. We'll get started. I now call the October 14, 2025, meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 6:06 PM. I guess I hadn't asked you this until just now, Councilman Carr, but are you willing to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And then Councilman Larson is not here, so I'll go ahead and give us the invocation. Everyone could please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for the opportunity we have to serve this community and to meet here together as citizens and members of the city council. We ask that it please bless us as we meet tonight, that we can have the Spirit with us to guide us and direct us and help us to know in what ways we can improve our city and what things that we can do to come together to help those in our community who are struggling. And I ask that it please help us that we can have our hearts softened and guided and we'll know exactly how we can best improve our city. We thank thee so very much for our first responders, for our military, for our EMTs, law enforcement, all of those who serve our community in many different ways, and those who serve our city as employees of our community, as well as serve our county in different ways. We ask that it please bless them with safety and guidance. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Well, by the thinnest margin, we can, we have a quorum, but let's conduct the roll call and see where we're at after the roll call.
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember Eric Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Pearson Lewis.
Absent.
Councilmember Mike Bailey.
Absent.
Councilmember Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilmember Kyle Larson.
Absent.
Councilmember Karen Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Tim Hancock.
I am here. I entertain a motion to excuse Councilman Larson, Councilman Bailey, and Councilwoman Rebecca Pearson Lewis from tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Borders, second by Councilman Carr. Any other discussion? I know that Mr. Councilman Bailey had said he's not going to be here for this meeting and had let me know about that. And that Councilwoman Pearson Lewis is late. I don't know about Councilman Larson. I shouldn't tease him, but whenever we start at six, there's just something that happens. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Aye vote aye, motion passes. As I indicated, we do have a quorum. I entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
And.
Second.
Councilman Carr with the motion, Councilwoman Borders with the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I would note that Councilwoman Pearson Lewis has arrived at 6:09 PM. You are not the only person who was late. There was somebody else who was late.
I apologize.
Ten guesses as to who it was.
He's the only one speaking.
I would say thank you to Mr. Butterfield for the text.
Oh, the reminder about starting at six?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so I was sitting there at my house enjoying some salad as a post-dinner salad. I don't know, I was just eating salad. And then I was like, oh, yes, our meeting is at six. It was at 5:55. Texted Mr. Butterfield and got here as quick as I could. Traffic! I would've been here on time, but for all the traffic.
I was pretty fast, too. I was getting the kid in the bath. That's time.
So this is, I just want to make sure the kid's not still in the bath and alone or anything like that.
He's not alone, there's another kid with him.
Good.
He's in the bath, he's just, he's supervising.
All right. Liquor code discussion, Administrative Services Director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. There have been some questions regarding our liquor code and some requests from some of our license holders, as well as some requests from our council members to review some items in our liquor code. Specifically, minors in bars are one thing that will be a point of discussion this evening. Also, the potential for establishing a point system for license holders, potentially revisiting the habitual drunken ordinance, and ordinances possibly regarding reporting underage and obviously intoxicated individuals, as well as drive-up and, drive-up liquors and liquor store doors and windows. So I would like to lead off by letting you know that I have provided you with, in your packet this evening, is information regarding the different types of liquor licenses and permits that are available, as are governed by our state statute. Also included, I tried to give you a brief synopsis of the areas that are a point of discussion for this evening. However, I did not want to omit any part of the Riverton Municipal Code or the Wyoming Statute Title 12 regarding liquor, so you have those in their entirety in the packet as well. So I want to go ahead and lead off the discussion, starting with the question about potentially including minors to be allowed in bars or liquor establishments. So at the request of a retail license holder, tonight's discussion focuses on possible modifications to the section of Riverton Municipal Code governing minors in establishments selling alcohol. The goal is to clearly define how the code, Riverton Municipal Code, aligns with Wyoming State Statute Title 12, and to determine whether any updates are warranted to reflect community expectations, enforcement consistency, and business operations for our liquor license holders. Now bear in mind that licensed authorities have the ability to be more restrictive than state statute, however, we do not have the ability to be less restrictive than state statute. Now bearing that in mind, of the 118 pages that I've provided you, I am not a lawyer, so if there may be questions that come up tonight that I can't answer, but I will do my best to help assist through this process. So I started in your packet by including the distinction between license types pertaining to what state statute defines and what Riverton Municipal Code defines, particularly related to retail licenses, bar and grill licenses, and then restaurant liquor licenses. So according...
Pearson Lewis, what's up?
Yeah, I have no internet, it's not letting me connect, and it's asking for a password, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I think my...
I can't even pull anything out, I mean, I have seen it, I've read it, I have my notes on it, I can't even get to them. So do we have an internet?
Yeah, I think our IT professionals work on getting that over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And they're usually listening.
They're listening.
Yeah. You could just put the password in really fast. I was like, because I don't want you to keep going and then...
Thank you.
Sure, of course. So I wanted to provide distinction between what state statute says regarding specific licenses and what Riverton Municipal Code cites, and perhaps where there's some ambiguity where we could further discuss. So state statute, and this is just a summary, Wyoming Statute 12-4-101, basically in summary, they say that the sale of alcohol, that retail liquor licenses pertain to the sale of alcoholic beverages for on or off-premise consumption. State statute dictates that minors are generally prohibited from bar or dispensing areas and may be allowed in separate dining areas if clearly separated. Statute also defines dispense, because the term dispense will come up throughout the evening, as mixing or pouring alcoholic beverages or malt beverages. Bar and grill licenses are established primary for on-premise consumption, and food services are required as a prerequisite to a bar and grill license. And minors may be permitted in dining areas, but not in dispensing or bar zones. And then lastly, a restaurant liquor license is primarily business in, a license for individuals primarily in the business of food service, and alcohol sales are incidental. Minors are generally permitted throughout the premise, including dining areas. Establishes primarily for food service with a commercial kitchen may allow minors generally, and then establishments with a commercial kitchen may allow minors to remain until 10 PM. So Riverton Municipal Code follows most of the same statute as the state does pertaining, well, we definitely do pertaining to bar and grill licenses and restaurant liquor licenses, but it becomes a little bit ambiguous when it comes to terms of dealing with retail liquor license holders. And Riverton Municipal Code 5.04.020, for sale of establishments generally, indicates that, that, I apologize, it says, "Except as provided in this section, no licensee or agent, employee, or server shall knowingly permit any person under the age of 21 years to enter or remain in the licensed building where alcoholic or malt beverages are dispensed in an establishment that provides adult entertainment and/or is primarily for on-premise consumption where the primary sale, source of revenue from the operation is from the sale of alcoholic or malt beverages, unless the establishment is operating a restaurant with a commercial kitchen where the primary source of revenue from the operation is from the sale of food and not from the sale of malt beverages." It goes on in the exceptions to read that "The establishment operates a commercial kitchen; persons under the age of 21 may enter or remain in the licensed building until the hour of 10 PM." And I think that's where the code is in conflict, because does it mean that the minor is allowed to be in the bar provided that the primary source of revenue is from the sale of food and not liquor? Or does the code say that they can be, minors can be in this, in the bar retail establishment up until 10 PM? So I think that's where we have a little bit of ambiguity that we're looking for. Riverton Municipal Code, Chapter 916.010, which is outside of the Alcoholic Beverages Code, also reads, "It's unlawful for anyone, any person under the age of 21 years old to frequent or be found laundering in, on, or about any barroom, saloon, disorderly house, or house of ill fame in the city at any time of the day or night." So as we work through this, we're really kind of trying to deal with a couple of our liquor establishments that offer a food and beverage service. So our code says no minors in the bar, but they do operate a commercial kitchen and they do sell food up to a certain point. And so the question or the concern from this particular licensee is that they want to be able to allow minors in their bar to purchase food, or at any time.
Your Honor.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just ask Mia for some clarification?
Yes, please.
Both the bar and grill license and the restaurant license, does it say or indicate if, because I thought it said 60% of the sales have to be derived from food. So is he able to by statute, or are they able to by statute provide, because it says from a licensed accountant, that 60% of their income is from food and not bar sales?
Your Honor.
Go ahead, please.
Not always.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Your Honor, at this point, I would just, I would stand for any further questions or open discussion amongst yourselves on how you would wish to navigate. Staff is definitely seeking your direction on how to further move forward with this area of the code.
And I think what would make sense, so we're not just having a long report from you and then we have discussion on it all, I think it would make sense that we move into discussion about minors in bars particularly now, and then we'll come back for your report for the next one. Does that make sense, Ms. Harris?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's do that. This was something that had been brought to us by one of our local liquor license holders who I don't see here.
Your Honor, the individual is unable to be here tonight due to a scheduling conflict.
Okay, well, and I also know that when things kind of get set, sometimes that makes it a little bit difficult. What I had sent to the council and had proposed for our meeting tonight is to have a brief introduction for each of the topics, then we'd discuss them for 20 minutes, decide if it's something we want to consider going forward, if we want to consider legislation in that area, ordinances in that area, or if it's something that we aren't interested in doing in ordinances in that area. So I guess I would just open it up right now for discussion regarding minors in bars amongst the council. First off, what is the appetite of the council regarding whether this is something that we want to allow or not? And then second off, I do see what I would detect as a little bit of ambiguity in there that maybe we would want to consider correcting. So in either... bit of ambiguity in there that maybe we would want to consider correcting. So in either event, I would suggest that we, we look at that a little bit. The language I'm referring to is, it says that a person cannot knowingly permit any person under the age of 21 years to enter or remain in the licensed building, but then we say the establishment is operating as a restaurant with a commercial kitchen, where the primary source of income is from, revenue is from the operation, is from the sale of food and not from the sale of alcoholic or malt beverages. But then it just says, "The establishment offers a commercial kitchen, and persons under the age of 21 years may enter or remain in the licensed building until the hour of 10:00 PM."
Yeah.
We don't really make clear, is this an "and"? Is this an "or"? Mr. Butterfield?
Your Honor, I appreciate you bringing up this question. I thought I'd just weigh in briefly. I posed that direct question to our attorney, and he interprets Subparagraph 1 and Subparagraph 2 as being combined by an "and." So the conditions are, one, the primary source of food comes from the commercial kitchen, and then two, they can stay until 10:00 PM. So it's an "and," not an "or."
Well, and then I look at that, and I can understand that, but then when you add three, if that were an "and," then three completely knocks it out of the consideration there.
Your Honor, your attorney identified the same problem and says we need to clean up our code just in that instance.
I'm glad. I agree with Mr. Solers. He's a smart man.
Your Honor?
Yes, ma'am.
One thing that I don't see mentioned here is that a minor should be accompanied by a parent.
That's not in our code.
No, and I believe we should add it.
The other thing is, is there's inconsistency between those two as well. We have saying that they can be there until 10:00, but then in 9.16.01, it just says, "It's unlawful for any person under the age of 21 years to frequent, visit, or be found loitering in or about any barroom, saloon, disorderly house, or house of ill fame in the city at any time of the day or night."
Your Honor, if I may interject. Also, now remember that our municipal code cannot be less restrictive than state code, and Wyoming State Statute 126-101 does address minors under the age of 21 being in a liquor establishment, which it says, "Except as otherwise provided in this title, no person under the age of 21 years old shall purchase, buy, possess all the things." And it says, "Except who is in the presence of his or her parent, spouse, or legal guardian, who is 21 years of age or older, as part of a church or religious organization for religious services, or for medicinal purpose that the alcoholic liquor, malt beverage, or ethyl alcohol is furnished by the person's parent or legal guardian of 21 years or age or older, or pursuant to lawful prescription." So state statute covers the fact that they should not be accompanied in a bar without a parent.
That's a good clarification. There's also no reason we can't include it specifically in our code.
Yeah.
And I think it would make sense.
And, Your Honor?
Yes, ma'am.
We take out "house of ill fame."
Are you aware of any houses of ill fame?
I'm just...
In Riverton?
I'm just saying, make it, modernize it maybe a little bit.
Perhaps there are houses of ill fame.
I just feel like that's...
We were just talking about a neighborhood that's, well, anyway, I won't go there. There may be some places that I would probably identify as houses of ill fame, considering our meeting we just had earlier this week. Councilwoman Johnson, you're looking at me as if you want to say something, or were you just...
Oh, I got plenty to say.
Okay.
But, when you're ready for it. Listen, I'm, I would be in favor of cleaning up our, the language as it relates to our city code. I did have a couple of folks reach out, one of those being a business owner. He was not in favor of allowing minors into the establishments. On a personal level, I think it's utterly absurd to even consider minors in bars. I think we're in a different day and age and time. Years ago, it was acceptable. I myself sat in the wagon wheel bar with my, my parents when we were kids, and I would eat in Charlie's when there was a restaurant on there. I think that, that there are a couple of things lacking in some of it. One, they are not 60% all the time food service. There's, I mean, there's a plethora. You could, you could come up with all kinds of reasonings. I think that it's unfair to adults who go into an establishment to relax after work, if they're a schoolteacher, if they're, you know, some kind of mentor to kids, and then be seen at the bar drinking. Studies show that kids that are introduced to alcohol at young ages, not necessarily use, but just alcohol in general, are more likely to consume alcohol. There hasn't been any recent studies done in Wyoming, what teenage kids are actually, what the numbers are reflected. I think the last study done was in 2021 for the state of Wyoming. There is no reasoning that I can think of that I would even entertain listening to that says kids should be in bars. So I will oppose this.
Okay.
Full-heartedly.
Any other discussion?
The question I have is, how many places do we have in town that even serve food? 60% that would even allow this?
Serve food 60%?
Isn't that the requirement that...
Ms. Harris?
60% of their sales comes from food?
Yep, Your Honor. I, I'm careful to give information out only because I don't have 100% of the facts. I look at probably the establishments in Riverton that would be most affected by this change would be the Bar Ten, and then also the Rusty Truck. And I think it would be safe to say that the Rusty Truck could probably show that 60% of their sales comes from food and not alcohol. I did speak with Jason at the Bar Ten, and he, he did indicate that, that he would not always be able to show the 60/40 equation at his particular location.
But in terms of, that, that would be liquor license holders. Of course, we have folks that have restaurant license or bar and grill license that...
And they, and they do show, and that, they do fit into that category.
The other thought that I have is, if, if this is something that there is some little bit of vagueness in, I would suggest that what the law is currently in Riverton would be that, as long as you're with a parent, you can be in a bar that has a commercial kitchen until 10:00, if a certain percent, well, let me look at it one more time. Hold on. Would be that you can be in the, in a bar that has a commercial kitchen, and the primary source of revenue comes from the sale of food and not from sale of alcoholic or malt beverages, would be all times of day. And then two would be, if it just has a commercial kitchen, but it's not the primary source of revenue, you're limited to be there only until 10:00. That's how I read it as we have it right now. If those are "or's," then that would be it. If you're taking each word as having meaning, and the fact that we are having two separate ones that are being divided by an "or," the way I read that would be, current law in Riverton is minors can be in a restaurant with a commercial kitchen if the primary source of revenue is from sale of food, all times of day, until they close, but have to leave at 10:00 PM if it's not that the primary source of income comes from food. So I guess the point is, we already have something in place that if there's some vagueness and we're not sure how to enforce it, I think we definitely need to get that sorted out. And I, and I guess what I would look for from the council is, how do we want to sort it out? Do we want to say, if the law as it currently stands is minors can be in a bar that has a commercial kitchen until 10:00 PM, cannot be in a bar that has a commercial kitchen unless it's, most of the sale, most of their revenue comes from the commercial kitchen any time of day? That's how I would suggest that we could read that, and with that in mind, I would say we should fix it, but the question is how to. Do you just add an "or" and leave it as it is, which, how I read it, would suggest what I've said? Or do you change it and say you've got to have a commercial kitchen where the primary source is from the sale of food? Am I talking myself into circles here?
I would say "or."
Or, or, you could tie it to, or, Your Honor, you could tie it to the kitchen hours, too.
That's an interesting thought. I will say, from Ms. Harris answering the question, it's good to know that state law already requires that you have an adult there, so that's good. We could clarify that in our code as well.
Your Honor, and to clarify that, that section of statute talks about the possession and not necessarily...
Present.
...being within a retail liquor establishment or the consumption. It says, it's specific to possession.
I think what makes the two unique is, with Rusty Truck, it's a clear separation in there. There's a dining area where you can consume on premises, and then there's the bar where you can consume on premises. So if they want to bring children in and have a drink with dinner, that's not an issue. But whereas other bars are set up differently, the dining area is directly across from the bar, where they're, tell me the word again.
Dispensing.
Dispensing, thank you. So, so they're dispensing clearly within five to seven feet of the bar. That's...
Which is, I think, part of the whole point of the code. We don't want to have kids watch people dispense alcohol. Good, bad, or indifferent, that's been the idea.
And I think it really puts them in a, in a position as well. I mean, how, if, if a juvenile walks in already intoxicated and/or obtained alcohol somewhere else, and then sits down to eat, how, how are they, how are they going to defend themselves if an officer walks in and this juvenile's intoxicated? They didn't serve him, but there's nothing that says they didn't, because they're sitting here intoxicated. There's, there's too many ifs, ands, ors, buts, maybes, I don't know, it's, it's...
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
For me, it boils down to, if you're frequenting an establishment that's primary focus is distributing liquor, no minors. If you're frequenting, frequenting an establishment that's primary purpose is to serve food, absolutely. If they happen to serve drinks, fine, minors are allowed. But it's that critical distinction between, what is your primary focus? And you can tell, every establishment that's primary focus to sell alcohol, you know it immediately as soon as you walk in the door. No minors in those establishments, because they're practicing for adulthood.
Yeah, I would agree.
Your Honor?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, take you back to 2017.
It was a good year.
The Wyoming legislative session actually amended Title 12 back then to move from a licensed room to a licensed building framework. So as you're thinking about this, and, and I'm just bringing it up in point just based on geography as some of our establishments, if you have a licensed building such as either Bar Ten or the Rusty Truck, licensed building means that the minors couldn't be in the restaurant area either, because alcohol is served within the building. So it may be that you all need to consider maybe a framework with regards to a dining area, perhaps, or, I don't know how you will want to frame it, but I'm trying to think of all the case scenarios with our liquor license holders that we're going to run up against, depending on how we decide, how you would decide to move forward with it, so.
Your Honor, just real quick, so then how do we determine, how do we not be less restrictive than statute? If it's the building, that covers every establishment.
I thought in, I'm sorry, I thought in one of these, it clearly stated that there has to be separation by Plexiglas. Let me find it again.
Your Honor, I can help with that. That's for on-premise and off-premise. So if you have a retail license that has sales for off-premise consumption, and they also provide on-premise consumption, there has to be that clear divider, as you're referencing, Councilwoman.
Okay.
So that does have that kind of built in there. So the question then is, what do we want to do? Not that I'm saying we have to have all the answers right now. We could say, hey, come back to us with a proposal, Ms. Harris, with these general guidelines, and, and we just completely throw it on our administrative services director. You know, we don't have public comments set for this one, but we don't have a lot of people. The concern, of course, is, you know, getting a lot of people that are taking a lot of time when we're wanting to get business done. But if you'd like to come up, feel free, Ms. Cox.
Another wrench into it.
Oh, thanks. We don't want wrenches.
So I'm Lindsey Cox, and we are going to be opening Honeyfly on Main Street here in the next year. And ours is just a little bit different, because our main source of income will be our retail as our store, not food. So we are going to do the winery permit versus just a liquor license. So I don't know if you want to consider those differences, because we would like it, you to be able to come in and buy a glass of mead, and use our outdoor venue for the events, and sit outside with your glass of mead while you enter, while we have music playing. So I would like to know, before we get too far into our, I mean, we're right at the point where we're putting everything inside the building. So if I needed to put up a barrier for where the dispensary would be, if that needs to be addressed as well, or if it's different for a winery, that's why I came tonight, just to know, while you guys were talking about that, if we needed to get something in line for those circumstances as well.
That's a great point. Ms. Harris, do you have all the answers?
No, she told me to come.
Well, and, and it keeps with the spirit of it, if you're talking about a commercial kitchen being most of it, if you had a retail license...
And we're not retail kitchen, because we won't be serving food. We might have something like a charcuterie board that you can purchase that's pre-made, but we're not going to be making food.
Mr. Butterfield, do you have some thoughts?
Your Honor, and I think this is where we do need to clarify Subparagraph F. If you look at Subparagraph F, at first it states, you can't be in there under 21. I'll move forward to, if the primary source of revenue is from the on-premises consumption. So in the question that was just raised, if the primary source of revenue for this business is, is not the on-premises consumption, that sentence may apply. And it doesn't really get into the revenue generated from the commercial kitchen until you get to Subpoint 1. So you see there's primary source of revenue in Paragraph F, and then in Subparagraph 1, it does talk about the commercial kitchen.
That, that makes sense. So you're saying, in other words, it's almost makes it superfluous to have one there at all, because before one, if you're saying the primary source of revenue shall knowingly permit any person, give me a minute, enter and remain in, and/or is primarily for on-premises consumption, where the primary source of revenue is from the sale of alcoholic or malt beverages, unless?
How, on number three, where it says, "Limited retail licenses or clubs are exempt from the age restrictions listed above."
That's different. That was mainly for like, well, I guess if you had it as a club, but then that's kind of, that's more like VFW or the Elks Club, where the rule is, you're not supposed to just be able to walk in there unless you're a guest of someone. So that's different, which is why we have so many events that are at the Elks Club and that kind of thing, where minors are...
Does, I'm sorry, Mia, does a winery license, does that fall under the same, is it considered a limited retail license? No?
Your Honor, no, it is not. It's its own separate permit.
I, I guess to me, it, it makes sense that whether it's a, most of the revenue is from a commercial kitchen, or from the sale of whatever, point is still sound. I would say that if we want to make that change, though, we're going to have to look at it and make the change.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to point out one more thing. It says the general, minors entering and remaining in designated cells area unless accompanied by an adult. And so I just wonder if we should, you know, I don't know if you rope it off at the day in the park, you know, you can, but you can still walk out and sit with your family there when they're hosting those type of events, for the music, you know, music in the park kind of deal. So I'm just wondering how, how we would be able to, if we had an area where they could be served and make sure that they're 21, if they could then walk outside. I'm thinking like the Lander Bar, you can get a drink and walk outside instead of the picnic table. So, in the idea of that, where you aren't serving outside, you still have to... So in the idea of that, where you aren't serving outside, you still have to walk up to the bar, be, check your ID and all of that, but be able to walk into the rest of the building with your beverage.
And I think if you look at it and consider it that way, it probably would be something where you'd want to have what we used to call a dispensing area, although the building is, you would probably want to have a separated dispensing area in that set of circumstances, I would think.
I would suggest a clear distinction between the two, a clear separation between the two, and then as you serve a wristband or something that says...
Right, if it's an illegal... Right, all right. Well, thank you. I just wanted to bring that up while you guys were having the discussion so that I know what to do when we're setting up.
I'm excited for you guys.
Thank you.
It's looking good.
Well, I appreciate you getting up here and speaking about it because that is, that's something important to be able to figure out how to do that. Okay, well, I don't want to spend all of our time on any one topic. I really want to kind of see, is there something that we want to look at changes? What are the changes we want to look at? Number one, the accompanied by an adult, I appreciate you pointing that out, that is really for possessing alcohol. So number one, we could look at a possibility of a change where we would just say, for example, F1, F2, F3, or F4, I mean, the whole thing for F, that we would say this is subject to minors being accompanied by an adult. We could put that in there. The second thing we could look at is saying we want to get rid of F1. We could say that it's got to be something where they're operating a commercial kitchen and they can, I'm sorry, get rid of F2 would possibly be it, where if they're operating a commercial kitchen, the primary source of revenue is from the sale of food or other items, and then they could be there again with an adult. I mean, where are we at? I guess what's the, what's the appetite of the council?
I would suggest just cleaning up our language to include, for places like her, as you just said, if the primary sale is food or...
Retail.
Retail. To cover that completely.
We would look at a change for food or retail. Would we want to have a change where we would require, no matter what, minors have to be accompanied by an adult?
I don't think they should be in there, period.
Your Honor, I agree. Well, I think with the adult, I think keeping that language in there, if, especially with Ms. Cox's business, I think that that needs to be very specific.
The point is, ones that have a commercial kitchen or retail that is the majority of the revenue, that's the question there.
Yeah, but does not the statute state that a licensed accountant has to provide that 60% of their sales is not from alcohol? 60% of their sales have to be from food.
Mr. Butterfield?
Your Honor, and that would be just for your restaurant type of license.
So for the restaurant, there's a difference between the restaurant license and if someone's a liquor license holder that is serving food, but as it says, you've got a commercial kitchen where the primary source of revenue is from the sale of food. So I would say not the 60% is what we have here, but what we have is just 51% is from the sale of food or retail. And we could change that and get rid of F2, keep F1, and change it to retail.
All right. One, just one thing Kathy brought to my attention. So the majority of our store is going to be retail. So if your child came in and wanted to buy you a fly rod for Father's Day, would they then be needed to be accompanied by an adult to purchase something that is not alcohol if they're not going in that partition section? I mean, the majority of the sales are going to be home goods.
You're bringing up nice stuff.
Yeah. I just don't want to limit the wording to they have to be accompanied by an adult to come into the store just because, or we won't sell anything if I can't have a kid come in and buy a stuffed animal, you know, that kind of thing.
And that's probably why we don't have accompanied by an adult in here as it sits, is probably because of that very thing. If we're going to have someone want to go into a bar that functions mainly as a restaurant, we're not necessarily as concerned about having an adult there, is what I gather from the way we...
Right, if you're just going in to buy a plate of french fries, you don't need your mom to be there with you.
My thing is just that the bar, if the primary use of your building is for selling alcohol...
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I didn't get myself in that rabbit hole, like, wait a second. I want people to be able to come in, so.
I agree. I think the kids should be able to go in and purchase things. And I'm not opposed to being able to grab a glass of wine and sit out on the deck, even with your kids there, that's not a big deal.
We want it to be a place where people hang out with their families, you know, so we want people to be comfortable. It's not, we're going, probably only going to be open until eight o'clock. We don't want it to, that later crowd, we don't want to be the rowdy crowd, so. But also, we want to follow the rules. So as we happen to be doing this part right at this time, it was opportune, we wanted to make sure that we covered all of our bases before we get in too deep, so. I appreciate your time.
Again, my recommendation, if the primary source of your income is the sale of alcohol is what I would apply the no minors to.
Well, let me think, that's what we have already, and then it would just be getting rid of the confusing F2.
Your Honor, my suggestion would be, and I do have a question, I wish, are Bar 10 owners here?
No.
I didn't see Bonnie, so. How late do they sell? Because you can easily say kitchen hours, you can tie it to kitchen hours, because usually those are pretty early. And, you know, I think that that would be an easier way than saying, hey, can we prove accountant 51%, you know, that, you know, that this is what you sell and whatever? If you said, if you tie the minor thing to kitchen hours, then that actually...
It's in state statute. That's required by state statute.
Well, that's, that's for a different license, so that's where there's some confusion here. A restaurant liquor license requires, to have a restaurant liquor license, you have to have 60% of the revenue come from food sales. Right now, the way our code reads is that you can have most of the revenue, which I read as 51%, that comes from a commercial kitchen, you could have minors there all day. And then if you have a commercial kitchen, you could have minors there until 10:00 P.M. That's the way I read it. So the point is, do we want to change that? If we're going to change it, the change we could make is getting rid of F2 and saying, we're getting rid of this confusion of only being there till 10:00. And I think that would be about the easiest change, would be doing that and kind of rewording it to make it more clear that it's an or.
When you're saying F2, I'm sorry, which one are you referring to on the...
So I'm talking about our code.
It says they can stay...
Page seven.
Yeah.
This is 5.04020.
Says they can stay minors can stay in restaurants until...
Where am I at? Where's that one?
It's page...
So if you go page seven in the middle column.
Oh, there we go. Thank you.
That is confusing, you're right.
Yeah, well, and I mean, we could make that clear just in general.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
This is such helpful discussion. We really appreciate your review and those that are here. As we look at subsection F, I think one thing we want to focus on is in the first line, it says no licensee or agent. As I've looked at other codes, a lot of times they focus more on the retail license. Because there are different restrictions and allowances associated with the various licenses allowed by statute, typically the one that is of most interest to folks as it relates to restricting people under 21 are the retail licenses, similar to what Councilwoman Johnson is referencing as far as the primary purpose is to be a bar. So we might want to focus on that as far as, right now, it just says no licensee, it doesn't distinguish between the different licenses that are offered by you as a governing body. And then we're hearing you loud and clear that we can maybe help with the distinction if you want to, as it relates to the sale of goods or food that is the majority source of revenue for the licensee. And one thing that we've also noticed is, it might be a good idea, not just to reference the commercial kitchen, but the operation of a commercial kitchen. There's a commercial kitchen sitting in your airport right now that's not being used.
Okay, yeah.
And so just having one doesn't necessarily mean that we're serving food from it, is my point.
Right, right, right.
That's a good point. Well, and also, you could have a commercial kitchen that's not being operated at all hours of the day either. It's not typical hours, right? They might be just open for lunch, and then we're saying, do we let minors in in the evening when they're not serving?
Your Honor, I apologize. So that is something you may want to consider is, if you want that commercial kitchen component, having it associated to the hours of operation of the commercial kitchen. Now, we've also seen that in some of the other ordinances around the state that they do restrict individuals under the age of 21 from sitting at the bar itself.
Yeah.
Seems to make sense.
And that might be another way to appropriately work around the issue of where the people under 21 will be in response to the issue of the license addressing the entire building.
Well, and this is almost creating its own license class because the restaurant, of course, requires 60%, but if you look at our code, it's almost like it's creating its own class where it's saying more than 50%. That's confusing.
Yeah, you've got that 9% gap.
Yeah.
Exactly. So it's like, if we're going to do that, let's be clear that we're creating our own class of license and not just, you know, playing it a little bit by ear here. I think we would want to be a little bit more clear. I guess what I would propose we do, so we're not going to be spending any more time on this tonight, no matter what happens tonight, this is still going to be something where ordinances are going to be proposed, there's going to be three readings, there's going to be further discussion. The discussion is going to entail public comment, anybody that wants to come up and speak at that point when there's any ordinance that would be proposed before the council will have the ability to do so. So for right now, I think having us have an opportunity to discuss this a little bit, and for Mr. Butterfield and Ms. Harris to be able to kind of get some ideas of where the council might want to go, come back with a proposal for us that you think makes sense and kind of entails somewhat as best as you can what has been discussed here today, and then we can get into the nitty-gritty of it in the details. Fair enough?
Your Honor, I liked it better when you just said Ms. Harris would figure it out.
I'd throw it at Mr. Toman, too, but...
So, Your Honor, if I may, for clarification then, pertaining to retail license holders only, you are, we are going to stick with our base code related to no minors in the bar with the exception of if they were, if they were, if they're going to a place with a commercial kitchen and the kitchen has regular operating hours. What am I missing?
Well, I think we were discussing basically the idea of where most of the sales is coming from something besides alcohol.
The majority of the sales, okay.
And we could make that pretty clear. If the majority of the sales come from something besides alcohol, I think that that might make sense as a change.
So the code would stand with restricting all minors from retail license establishments pertaining to bars without kitchens then per se?
I would think so. And then if you can show most of the sales come from a commercial kitchen or retail sales, I would think we could look at that as a possible exception. And then we could talk about, what does that exception look like? Does that exception be that we need to have an adult that goes in there with you? I don't know. Does that exception be that you have to have a separate serving area? And if you have a separate serving area, it doesn't matter if you have an adult go in there with you. That might be something that makes sense, too. So I think if we can kind of look at it from that standpoint and discuss it.
And I would like to see, provide consistency to the more than, you know, if we're going to go with 60%, let's go with 60%. Let's not have it be arbitrary later on down the road, later in code, let's just say 60%, 60%, 60%.
And I think that, to a certain extent, makes sense because state statute says 60%. If we were just to go with that, then as it stands already, if it's a restaurant, I don't know if there's any restriction in terms of state statute for minors being in a restaurant that has a restaurant license. It gets a little bit confusing where you have a restaurant that has a package license. So we don't want to make it so that, I guess my point is, so 60% has to do with the restaurant license, which is not off-premises consumption, it's only on-premises consumption. If you're going to go with 60%, you could say this is 60% for on or off-premises consumption would allow minors to be there.
Your Honor, actually, specific licenses will only allow for on-premise consumption and sales.
Right.
So...
And that's my point. The only one that allows off-premises is a liquor license holder in terms of a package liquor license holder.
The other clause in the code with relation to restaurant license holders is that that 60/40 needs to be verified and provided by an accountant and through regular audited accounting documents. You want that also in the code?
I think it would make sense to start with that, and then we're going to have public hearings, we're going to discuss this, and people can come and tell us what they think about that. If the liquor license holders feel like that's onerous, we can discuss it and figure it out. Okay. I think we ought to move on. We have beaten this horse to death. Well, I mean, not to death, we're going to come back and beat it more, make sure it's dead. Habitual drunkards was the next one that we had. What can you tell us about that one, Ms. Harris?
Your Honor, did you want to talk about the point system first, or did you want to go with...
No. I was just going in the order that Ms. Harris had it in. In the in the materials, after the minors, it was the habitual drunkards. I'm good either way.
And, Your Honor, we apologize for the confusion on what we distributed to you and also the liquor licensees. We had minors in bars, point system for license holders, habitual drunkard, and then the ordinance regarding underage.
Okay.
And then we did drive up.
That was the order that I sent out in the email, too. Let's do the point system next, then. Tell us about that, Ms. Harris.
And if you don't mind, I'll take that one.
Sure.
We just didn't provide a lot of material in the packet for it, and that's why you don't see it in the table. This is something that Councilwoman Johnson brought forward and provided examples to you as a governing body during your discussion on public safety. Prior to getting into your discussion tonight, I thought it would be valuable to review what you currently have in your ordinance in contrast to the communities that were provided as examples by Councilwoman Johnson. What you're really dealing with is when there are violations as it relates to state statute and municipal code for those that hold alcohol or liquor licenses. In brief, your municipal code outlines the number of violations and the various violations under 504180. And they're very specific and they cross-reference to state statute. Our code also references that we track these for a three-year period. But I want to ensure that we note that violations are conditions upon a conviction, so not just an observation of violation or a citation of violation, it has to be a conviction of violation before a lot of the subsequent penalties fall into place. So upon conviction of a violation by municipal court, the municipal court must notify the city clerk within 30 days to inform them of the type of conviction, when the violation occurred, and whether or not the violation in the ruling of the court has been appealed. Once the city clerk receives that information, they are required to notify the liquor license holder. I imagine they will already be aware of it, but that is how our process works, that the clerk then notifies the licensee and provides notice of how to mitigate the issue or the violation that was convicted in court. If it is determined by the city clerk that the licensee has not made a good faith effort to mitigate the violation as required by the notice that the clerk provides, the licensee, then the clerk notifies the governing body, and the governing body has opportunity to have a hearing with the licensee. The purpose of the hearing would be to determine whether the liquor licensee should face restrictions, a suspension, a fee, or any other penalty allowable by our municipal code. Again, our code allows for a three-year period for you to bring information into these hearings, but it does have to be based upon a conviction and not just a notice of violation or observed violation or a citation of a violation. The process is allowed to be appealed to the district court. So any decision that the city council renders to the licensee as far as a penalty, it has the ability of being appealed to the court. being appealed to the court. To contrast that with the two communities that Councilwoman Johnson provided, first, the city of Cody. City of Cody has a similar process, but they remove some of the subjectivity of a hearing and add a bit more objectivity of how violations will be penalized. The process is the same in the sense that once a violation occurs and is convicted in a court, the court must notify the clerk. In Cody, and I'll be brief through the process, once that conviction occurs, the city clerk ascribes points to the licensee that are listed in the municipal code. The licensee may then request a hearing if they are contesting the points that are being ascribed to their license. The hearing is not conducted by the city council, but by a third-party hearing officer. The hearing officer has opportunity to consider all facts. After a certain period of time, they render findings of facts and conclusion of law to the city council, this is again in Cody, at which point the city council then issues a ruling as a conclusion to that hearing process. That ruling is basically following either the penalties that are associated with the number of points that the licensee would receive, or to waive the penalty based on the result of the hearing, or the third-party hearing officer. If the penalty led to a suspension, the licensee has opportunity to appeal the suspension to district court. The other community that has a point system that Councilwoman Johnson provided you was the city of Laramie. Their process is similar, but not same. And I should say that the city of Cody, before I move on to Laramie, falls a 24-month period. Moving on to Laramie, the city of Laramie falls a 12-month period as it ascribes points to licensees. At the conviction of a violation, the city clerk is notified, and then the city clerk notifies the licensee that they have 10 days to request a hearing. If the licensee does not request a hearing, the city clerk ascribes the points and the penalties established by ordinance to the licensee. If the licensee requests a hearing, the city manager in this instance appoints a hearing officer who then hears the matter and has power to ascribe penalties and the points. If the licensee is unsatisfied with the process of the hearing, the licensee in this instance in Laramie has opportunity to appeal it to the city council. If the decision results in a suspension, then the licensee still has opportunity to appeal that to a district court. I should note that by state statute, revocation of a liquor license is only given to the court as far as the ability to do so. You as a governing body do not have the power to revoke a liquor license. You have the power not to renew a liquor license, but you cannot revoke. What you can do is take action to have the city attorney file with the district court the complaint. So I wanted to provide just a brief overview of those processes. I'm not getting into the different points as it relates to the various types of violations because those have already been provided to you. And with that, Your Honor, I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, sir. Ms., Councilwoman Johnson, this was the one that you had proposed. So before we get into discussion, wanted to have you add anything to what Mr. Butterfield had said.
Yeah. So the interesting thing about the point system, and I'm just trying to, you know, thinking outside the box. So I feel like if we don't try something, then we fail. And even if we try something and it fails, at least we're trying something. And everything that Kyle just talked about is positive in that liquor license holders have every recourse available to them to not agree with whatever's taking place. So there's an appeal process. So at any time if they don't agree, we're not creating any new ordinances. We're not creating any new laws. We're not doing, all we're doing is adding, or all it would be doing, is adding a point system. And that is primarily to hold ourselves accountable. Over the years, I think when violations have occurred or things have been discovered, we typically go in and just visit with whomever and let them know, you can't be doing this or this occurred, or we had a report of that, or, you know, you need to change, you can't be serving before hours. You can't, you know. And there's been, there's been plenty of violations that are not accounted for. And we need to have a sure way of accounting for those violations instead of just the visit that something has been incorrect. We need, we need to be holding ourselves accountable. And this, I feel, is a really good way to do that. It puts the contact in the police department's hands and a tracking system. So at the beginning of the year, when renewals do come up, we're able to look at individual licenses and say if they were convicted of, if they were issued a citation and they were convicted, you know, that's, we can discuss that at the time of renewal. If there's no effort to correct it and it just continues, I think that would give us more leverage to deal with some of the issues. But if it's a one-time issue, somebody made a mistake, you know, mistakes happen. But I think there needs to be good faith in our license holders doing the right thing, knowing what the regulations are, knowing that they have to have tips training, knowing they can't have minors in the bar, knowing that they need to accurately fill out their applications for renewal, knowing what hours of service they can have or should be serving and shouldn't be serving. These are all violations that have occurred. And I think it's a great way to keep track of that and be able to discuss it come up renewal time. So that's why I brought it forward. And I brought two different examples of it. And I, if I'm, I like the 12-month aspect of it simply because I don't think that we should be holding anything against any business or establishment over a period of years. I think in 12 months, that's adequate to correct any shortcomings and deal with it then. That's what I brought forward.
Okay.
Your Honor, I have some questions here. So, and I don't know exactly who I direct these to, if it's the chief or who. But my question, I guess, is what problems do we have, are we having, you know, with our license holders that, that this is required? And I guess I want to know, like, Councilwoman Johnson, like, how did you know, like, is this a procedure that, that would, you know, are they just being talked to? Is that what is happening? I mean, I guess that's the question. Is that what's happening? Or they're just being talked to? Or are they being written up? Is this a problem in Riverton that we're having? Why are we having this discussion? I guess my next, and then my other questions are, is this working in Laramie and Cody? You know, how often are they having problems in that, in that issues? So I guess that's like my, my big questions. Like, is this really, are we having this issue? Is this like this big problem here that we're having? Or, you know, you know, what's, what's the issue here?
We had, I guess, let's start with the easiest question. Have we had any violations that have resulted in a conviction for any of these listed ones in our code right now in the last year?
Your Honor, not to my knowledge.
Okay. So as it stands, now whether that's that people haven't been cited or whatever it is, we have not had any convictions for, just as I'm looking at this, making a false statement on a liquor license, failure to notify city of changes in application, sale or transfer of liquor license without permission, all of those, 1 through 19 that we have in 5.04170, or 180E. None of those have resulted in convictions in the last year.
Year, two years?
Your Honor, not to my knowledge. And perhaps the police department would provide the best information on some of the issues that Councilwoman Pearson-Lewis is questioning. But before he does so, I think it's important to note that first and foremost, when there are violations, we need to ensure that we're enforcing the state statute and municipal ordinances. And so first and foremost, we enforce what's on the books. And then the court has the opportunity to levy fines and do what it has to do as it issues the conviction or doesn't issue a conviction. After the conviction, I think this is the process we want to talk about as it relates to the status of the liquor license. So I just want to make that clear, that first and foremost, we need to be committed as a city to enforce the statutes and the ordinances on the books. And that's what the police department will do and what the court will do. But you as a governing body, after that conviction occurs, have responsibility to question whether or not the licensee is in good standing.
Okay.
Whether there should be additional penalties as it relates to additional fines and what was issued by the court, suspension, or the recommendation for revocation. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that, but...
And I appreciate that, Mr. Butterfield. Chief, can you tell us if we've had any violations of any of these 19 within the last year or so? And if you need time to look it up, we can come back and discuss it more later.
So the short answer is not that I know of. You know, this discussion and other things have, we talked about how to add additional condition codes for our current software system. So there's a way to track some of this. Our lead dispatch supervisor was able to do a quick search. And just for the last fiscal year, there was 698 calls at alcohol establishments this last year. But that goes for everything. And I'll give you, for instance, that's the Walmart, the Smiths. It would take some time to get us specifically to, if it was an alcohol-related offense at a for-sale establishment versus a shoplifting or a parking ticket. So we would need more time to hand-search the 698 calls to see specifically what they, what they were.
Well, and I really like what Councilwoman Johnson had to say about this, which is, number one, this is already something that's on the books. Already, if you have proof of a violation of any of the chapters of these codes, the governing body may impose progressive penalties for multiple violations of any law, city codes, and rules within the preceding three-year period. Now, you're proposing 12 months, but right now, as it stands on our code, as specified, unless mitigating circumstances indicate, the penalty should be reduced, or aggravating circumstances indicate it should be increased. Governing bodies shall consider the prior violation history, the licensee's good faith effort to prevent a violation, the existence of written policies governing the licensee's employee conduct as mitigating circumstances before taking an action. The action for this is suspension and/or revocation of a liquor license or permit. One of the things that I kind of like, this is something that's getting some traction within the county, this is something that Landor just talked about. And they were talking about a demerit system, 10 points for the sale to a minor, 10 points for failure to cooperate with law enforcement, 8 points for sale to an intoxicated person. I'd probably say that would need to be more, but that's just my opinion. That's a big deal. 5 points for after-hours sales of alcohol, 3 points for failure to put its employees through tips training. And then, if they're convicted of this, then if they acquire 10 to 14 points, they need to present a correction plan. 15 through 19 points, a potential three-day suspension of its liquor license. 20 to 24 points could result in up to a seven-day suspension of its license. To me, this is a lot easier as a city council to deal with, to have a point system in place, than to just say the city council could do whatever it likes, up to and including this, and you have to take into account these things. Now, I was on the council, I think you were on the council, Carla, when we discussed and passed the ordinance for this. And at the time, discussed the possibility of a point system. But I think at the time, there just wasn't an appetite for it. But it does create, there's a benefit to the community, to liquor license holders, that they actually know what the possible consequences can be. I mean, can you imagine being a liquor license holder and you're like, okay, I had an employee who sold to a minor. Could my license be revoked? That's frustrating situation to be in and not knowing how to handle that and not knowing what could result. So to me, I like the idea of exploring a point system.
I do.
I think it's helpful for the liquor license holders. I think it's helpful for us rather than just some of the vagaries of what we currently have.
I would like an opportunity to respond to Ms. Pearson-Lewis, how I found out about this. A couple different things came to light. When we were discussing public safety and all of that, I started looking into some of it. For instance, 504.180, the type of violation is, let's see, where's it at? Number two, failure to notify city of changes in application information for liquor license within 30 days. At the beginning of the year, we sat on the Sundowner's license. It was closed for several months.
Right.
And they submitted the application that they were operational. And it wasn't until the state came in and did a check that we learned that they were closed. And so the information that was submitted at the time was false. That's a clear violation of the code. As of last week, there is one license holder here in town that has not paid their taxes since February. There is also another liquor license here in town that consistently has minors in the bar. And that's been brought forward by other bar owners that have come and talked to me about that. There are, the reason the hours of operations for Sunday service changed was because somebody was serving alcohol prior to hours of service. The reason why the minors in bars is being discussed is because there were minors in the bar. There are violations occurring that are not being documented, and it is unacceptable. So when I looked at it, and I'm trying to figure out, so I came in and I visited and I asked, how do we document this? And discovered it's not being documented. So we need to be accountable, just as much as the bar owners do. And that's why I brought to light the point system. And it takes the responsibility to the police department to handle that so we have an actual tracking system of doing it. And so that we can intelligently decide in January, if they have multiple violations and there's no will or want to fix the issues, then, then we should not be renewing their license.
Yeah.
So that's how it came about.
So I guess the question is, though, if we have this great point system, and maybe what if there's still not somebody that's bridging that gap, you know, or doing that? Then what?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
You're saying if there's not any violations, it kind of seems silly to be legislating.
No, no. What if they're still not tracking the violations?
Well, that's where I think having a code that would say that if there's any violations of this kind, it would have to be reported to the city clerk by the court clerk.
Okay.
That's how it could be.
And they actually have to be convicted before the points are even assessed.
Okay, I see.
And that's one of the things that's important about it. You're still offering due process. This isn't something like, and no offense, Councilwoman Johnson, but all of those things you've listed have not resulted in a conviction.
Correct.
Yeah.
Those are just allegations that somebody has made. And the point is, nothing would be acted on unless there were a conviction.
Conviction.
That's, the whole point is due process.
Due process, right.
So whether we've had violations or not, I understand you believe we do and we may have. But the point is, we can't be operating under something that is not resulting in a conviction.
Correct, yes.
So, and then, of course, it's incumbent upon the police officers, the police department, to be investigating and making sure those are charged. But at this point, as he sits here today, the chief, and no criticism of you, chief, we don't have a system in place to keep track of it. So having it be something like, as simple as court clerk is being told, you have to report to the report to the city clerk about any of these violations, that'd be important. I would also suggest that it might be something that, could be something, we could reach out to the circuit court and asking if they have any violations in the last 12 months for any of our liquor license holders involving some of these things. Because not all of these are city or municipal ordinances. Some of these are state statute, 124102, making a false statement. That's a violation of state statute, not city code. That's something that would have to be charged through the circuit court. 124102C, all of those. So I think it's worthwhile to continue the discussion, and I am excited about where Lander has theirs, just because I think part of the whole idea of government is, you don't want to be acting arbitrary and capriciously. Something that is objective, that you can put and say, there was a conviction for this, it was on this date, this is what we're going to be doing, I think makes our lives easier. Makes lives easier for the liquor license holders, too.
Your Honor, can I just say, I'm not saying, it's not criticism of anybody or anyone or anything that's been done. It's just holding ourselves accountable. It's how we've always operated, evidently. And if we're trying to do things better and more accurately and not egregiously, then that's why I bring it up. It's not because I'm pointing fingers or blaming anyone or anything, because this woman knows more about liquor laws and licenses than anybody I know. So she's done a wonderful job. I just feel that it, we need more accountability on ourselves. And it's a fair process for both the liquor license holders and us to be able to make informed decisions.
Councilman Carr, you were starting to say something, and I think you've had three other people speak since.
That's okay. Good discussion. Just real quick, the difference between expectation and performance is accountability, right? If you're performing to the expectation, there's no accountability. You're doing well. We've codified our expectations. They're clearly written down. What we haven't codified, in my opinion, is how we measure the performance. And so I'm definitely in favor of a point system. I think this is fantastic. What gets measured gets improved. And if we can codify those performance expectations or metrics, then we have something to go back to our codified expectations and then make real, non-arbitrary, non-capricious decisions about whether that liquor license holder should remain a liquor license holder. That's it.
I will say that I don't know what's going to happen with the Lander ordinance, but I mean, we'll have some time to have seen how that's gone through and might have another idea of what we could consider from what they end up doing. It'd be good to be able to look at that and come up with some ideas.
Oh, Your Honor, we just beat them in football. We can do better in Lander.
It's true.
Your Honor, I appreciate the discussion. Forgive the levity. It sounds like one of the changes is to adjust the timeframe to 12 months, which, a personal comment of mine is, I think that makes sense because the license is issued for that period.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And so it matches with the time they hold the license. And then we can amend the process after which a conviction takes place in our code to match with the point system, and we can come back with a proposal, if that's what you'd like.
Well, and in all reality, let's say we do get a lot of issues in 12 months, but it's not enough for us to seek revocation, for whatever reason. Let's say another 12 months go by, it's not enough for us to seek revocation. That next year, there's no reason we'd have to renew it. We could take that into account. It doesn't have to be revocation. It can be non-renewal. Not that I'm trying to get anybody's ire up. I'm just saying, it's all part of what can be considered. Okay, I think that's probably enough discussion there. Again, for any of the liquor license holders that are in the room, I know some of you have come in late, not that I'm criticizing, please feel free to come and go as you please. Each of these, if they do result in an ordinance that would be proposed to the council, there will be three readings. There will be a public hearing for you to be able to come in and talk about it. If any of these things are proposed and you want to give us feedback about it on how it's going to impact you, please let us know individually or come and testify when we discuss it. So this is, I hope you understand, nothing is being decided here, except for we're deciding what we're going to be looking at. So I would encourage you to just keep that in mind, and we'll come back to it at a later time. Okay, what was the next one on our list this time, Mr. Butterfield?
Your Honor, I think we can follow what's in the packet now. Habitual drunkard, if you mind.
Okay. Did you want to speak about that, Ms. Harris, or do you want me to? Because I was here when we talked about it.
I'd be happy to take a break, Your Honor.
Perfect.
Before it...
I'll let you do that. All right. So already codified in our code is a situation where it says in our code, you cannot sell, sale, sell, sell, provide alcohol to anyone who is a habitual drunkard. Part of the purpose of an ordinance that was discussed back in, okay, this I will need your help with. 2018, we had a regular meeting. So it was October and November and December of 2018, was, hey, habitual drunkard is not really fair to hold somebody accountable to. If we're saying you can't sell to a habitual drunkard, we need to say, what is a habitual drunkard? The proposal at the time was for the liquor license holders, and I think this applied to not just packaged liquor dealers, but restaurants as well, anybody who is selling alcohol, would have to keep track of people who would be basically labeled as habitual drunkards through a certain number of convictions for alcohol-involved violations within a certain period of time. I think it was like four in a year. I may not remember exactly, but... So the idea is, you would have a list that you would have to keep at your establishment. You would have to go through and look at that list before you would sell to someone to ensure that you're not selling to someone who is a habitual drunkard. And I could be wrong. It might not have applied to the restaurant liquor licenses, now that I think about that. I don't remember, Ms. Harris. Was it just the packaged liquor dealers that had to do that? Maybe I should look at the ordinance.
Your Honor, I'm looking at the ordinance.
Well, in either event, after you look at that, let me know. In either event, this was done without really feedback from liquor license holders. It was kind of sprung on them, so to speak. They didn't love the idea of it. It felt like it was adding more obligations to them. And the ACLU didn't like it either, because they were saying, well, this is going to disproportionately involve, or the people that are going to be involved are going to be people who are minorities. Now, good, bad, or indifferent, that's where we were at. That is something that had gone through three readings, and on the third reading had failed. So the question then now is, do we want to reconsider something like that? Do we want to reconsider what we already had considered? Same language. Do we want to send it to a solutions committee that we could have put together to have, first thing to do is to consider different ways to define habitual drunkard? Or do we want to just say, hey, this is, I mean, we don't want to mess with looking at this?
Your Honor, this one's a difficult one, because I think that it's, on one hand, I think it's unfair for liquor license holders to try to determine if somebody's a habitual drunk or not. However, if they're conducting business appropriately and they're IDing everybody that comes in, as they should be, the list is right there. And again, if it's attributed to numbers, if somebody who's been arrested six times that month for public intoxication is on the list, I mean, most times they know who some of these folks are just by sight, but if we're checking IDs like we should be and the name is on the list, it shouldn't be that difficult. But then I think you also have to look at the bigger impact that it has when people are unable to get alcohol and the impact it has on the hospitals and the ambulance service, because then they start to have withdrawals. And so we're creating impact to other facilities, not just the jail, not just license holders, but there's going to be a much larger impact to other facilities. That's a difficult one. I gotta, I've got to think on that one for a second.
Well, that's okay, and there's no rush on it. We can discuss this at another time and decide whether we like it or not.
You know, having gone through the discussions, or at least heard the discussions that we had in 2018, this is an incredibly slippery slope. It's not illegal to fall off the wagon. And the second, we have a list of habitual offenders. It is not illegal to purchase alcohol if you're sober. So in that respect, if we enforce what we already have codified, not to sell to an individual that's intoxicated, that puts a little more onus on it. But if they're sober or relatively sober, we start to infringe on civil liberties.
Yeah.
I mean, that is a fact. And not just for minority, that's everyone.
Well, and here's part of the issue that there was with it. This was not penalizing anybody who is a habitual drunkard. This was penalizing the liquor license holders if they sold a habitual drunkard.
Oh, my God.
It's holding them accountable.
And so that was one of those things that was... And I'll, you know, full disclosure, this was a tie vote. Any guesses as to who was the no vote as a councilman at the time? Butted heads on it. And that's okay. But I mean, I was a no. So I bring this up because I had someone else who had brought it up to me, and I said this is a worthwhile discussion. But I would probably remain a no, because I feel like this unfairly is punishing the liquor license holders for something that they're not doing. They're not the ones that are out there that are drinking to the point that they could be considered a habitual drunkard.
And, Your Honor, is this even enforceable? I mean, truly, are they, they're going to be like, I'm sorry, chief, I sold to somebody that was, are they telling on themselves? What's going on here?
That was some of the discussion. That was some of the discussion, was how are you supposed to enforce this? I mean, it's not like, you know, they're going to have a bottle that says, this was sold by this liquor establishment.
Oh, whoops, I did a thing.
I mean, maybe they might, could.
You know?
But you're exactly right. And then, are you going to base it on the word of someone who said they went and got it there? It's, there are some issues for, I think...
It's not enforceable.
Enforcing it. And it was just, it was tricky. And when, when it really came down to it, I mean, we got through three readings, I mean, two readings. We got at the third, and it was tabled at one point, and this went on for three months. We didn't just barely touch it. This was discussed ad nauseam.
Oh, jeez.
I think I would agree with Councilman Carr. We already have laws in place that say if you sell to an intoxicated individual, that's very clear. That's something that they can define as they walk into their establishment. They can see physically, verbally, you know, are there speech slur, bloodshot, watery eyes, all this good stuff. It can be defined what an intoxicated person is. Whereas a habitual drunkard, you're right, it's not against the law to fall off the wagon and drink, but on the same note, then I would strongly encourage that we enforce what we have on the books as far as public intoxication. Because there are people that have reached out, it's not necessarily on our list to discuss, but people that live directly across from the city park, daily, see these people sitting at one picnic table, myself included. I look across the street every day. There's eight or 10 of them that sit at a picnic table. They pass the bottle around, officers drive by, but unless we get a call, sometimes they're not dealt with. And so that needs to be cleaned up.
I was confused for a minute. You were saying, myself included. I thought you were saying, you go sit out with them and...
Well, I mean, there's days.
You're right.
But I'm just, I'm just saying that if we aren't, if we aren't going to look at things like that, then we need to strongly enforce a zero tolerance policy on it. If you, if, take care of it. We have ordinances, we have laws in place. There's no reason to rewrite the...
And up until this one, each of the things we've been talking about are really strengthening or adjusting or figuring out and making clear what we already have.
Right.
This is specifically one where we're saying, come up with something new. And I hesitate to do that unless we have some solid reasons for it. And especially where we're talking about penalizing our liquor license holders.
Yeah.
I just, I feel like that's kind of a hard pill to swallow. And it was for me at the time, and it was for the liquor license holders at the time.
I don't think that's something that I would support.
So I think the thing that bothers me about this is, you alluded to public intoxication. So if somebody is arrested for public intox 10 times in a month, maybe they shouldn't be allowed to buy alcohol. Maybe there needs to be some sort of a law in place about that.
Well, that's exactly it. And so then, then you're saying, this is a person who is otherwise, every other person in the city of Riverton could buy alcohol, except for that person. I, that's a hard one, too.
It is, but not every person that's drinking is going out and getting public intox.
Getting 10 public intoxication.
But isn't that a danger to the community?
I agree.
So...
Instead of, I like where you're going with that, though. Instead of holding the liquor license accountable for that, hold the individual who's responsible accountable for that and create a city ordinance as a habitual drunk, so officers can charge them with that, and that's something the judge can deal with.
So here's the, here's the issue, because we did discuss that already, and here's what I will tell you. Already, public intoxication is punishable by six months in jail. That is the most that we can do for any one charge in the city of Riverton. Other than that, you're having to use a state statute. So already, a public intox, which is what you are talking about this person would be doing, is punishable by six months in jail. So all you would be talking about doing is adding another six-month jail sentence to them, which generally speaking, I'm going to tell you my experience dealing with judges, if you had a public intox as well as this charge, and they were back-to-back, I'm going to tell you what almost every single judge is going to do, is have them be concurrent, and it's going to be six months in jail. It's not really giving you another tool that's going to be very helpful. But it's worth considering, and here's the one thing that I think we should talk about, is what is a habitual drunkard? Because if nothing else, right now on the books, because I don't think we ever defined it, a habitual drunkard is just kind of there, and we're telling our liquor license holders, don't sell to habitual drunkards. But we're not defining them for you. Do we have a definition? Am I wrong?
Your Honor, we do not currently have a definition on the books.
So if nothing else, it might be worthwhile to consider an ordinance that would define that, and we can discuss that further and...
Genius.
And/or say, get rid of it. I haven't yet, I want to. Come on up, Mr. Thorpe. If you don't mind telling everybody your name, too.
I'm Tyler Smith.
I said Thorpe, Smith.
The TIPS training program says, anyone... Tana, could you help me with that?
What are you trying to say?
The habitual drunkardness. A habitual drinker, anyone that has more than two drinks per day?
Come on up, Ms. Smith. Both have you at the mic, just so people who are watching can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Tana. I'm with Fremont County Prevention Program. So anyone that has five or more drinks per day is considered habitual.
So with that definition, I guess if you're a bartender and you have someone come in there on a regular basis and have five or more drinks, that would be, that would fit hand in glove with what we have in TIPS training, and would say you can't do that. That's an interesting thought process.
That's a pretty slope, like you were saying, Mr. Carr, so...
But I mean, if someone's coming into your bar every day and drinking five drinks, you shouldn't be selling to them?
Right.
Could be...
Down in a week, you know?
It's a worthwhile, I don't know, I think it's worthwhile to at least, well, yeah, and I don't want to do that, but...
I mean, that TIPS training does help out a lot. You learn a lot from her, so...
Good.
Your Honor. I'm not sure it's so much about how much they're drinking, it's about the violations that they continue to have. that they continue to have. I think that's where the, the word habitual starts to take effect in our discussion. If you start counting the drinks that they have, yeah, you're exactly right. Every bar in town would be out of business in five days. Because several people come in on a daily basis and have five, six, seven drinks. That, there's nothing wrong with that, as long as they're not venturing out into the public and breaking our codified laws. The habitual drunkard that I think we're talking about are those that have been charged, have been to court, convicted, and are, you know, we can set the number wherever we want. Is it five a month, 10 a year, 50 a year? What is that? But then, at what point, once you've defined it, what does that do for you? Because the violations aren't cumulative under state statute. It continues to be the six-month, no matter how many times they're arrested, it can, there's only so much we can, as a municipal court, that we can do, right? The judge can only go up to so much. So, at what point do we need to start lobbying our state legislators to change statutes so that we can say, "Okay, we've defined habitual offenders. We have known habitual offenders. We need to, instead of the six-month penalty, now you've been kicked into a, a group of clearly defined individuals. Now, your judge has the authority to increase that to a year, two years, five years." I don't know, just spaghetti on the wall.
Yeah. Well, and I think for sure, if nothing else, I think we need to look at this again, just in terms of either getting rid of it, in terms of saying, "You can't be selling to a habitual offender," or defining it, so that we aren't creating some confusion. One way or the other, I think it needs to be addressed, so that we don't just sit there and leave open something vague for someone to say, "Don't be doing that."
I could be wrong, but I believe that was in one of the bills this year, was it not, Kyle, to increase incarceration to one year instead of the six months, and that was shot down? In one of the, I'm pretty sure there was. I think they, they attempted it, and it was not, it didn't go through.
And I think that, yeah, that, that would be where I would recommend the conversation go, is, okay, so do, do we need to define it? If we define it, then that gives us a path to, do we need to start lobbying our legislators, or is it something we can accomplish in our code?
So, I think it's something worthwhile talking about, but I don't have really the ideas. I, I would just say, we kind of, I'll try to look at it and figure something out. Eric?
I would be in favor of going to legislature to, to impose a state statute for public intoxication, which would allow for longer incarceration.
I will tell you that the, the appetite, and I, clearly, I'm hungry, because I keep using that word.
You've had salad. Relax.
There you go. The appetite at the state legislature has already been to actually lower the potential penalties for most of these traffic sort of offenses. So, for example, most of the traffic offenses were actually punishable by 20 days in jail, a $200 fine or both. Couple of years back, they made it so that actually, for first offenses, it's not 20 days, it's just a fine. You, you don't get into a jail sentence until a second offense, I think, and then it's five days. Maybe the second offense is just a greater fine. And that's within a year period.
Did they attach any kind of property damage with that, or...?
Well, that's, that's, those are separate ones, but I'm just talking like, typical traffic offenses, for the most part, are punishable by a fine for a first. Now, DUS, so driving under suspension, no insurance, those are different. Those are, those have jail time available for the first one. But, for most of the other ones, they removed that. And then pedestrian under the influence, which for many years was a tool that the Riverton Police Department would use to arrest someone, to actually be able to jail them, because they were on a public street or highway, too intoxicated to safely care for themselves, they could arrest them and get 20 days in jail. At that time, the city ordinance actually provided for a fine only for public intoxication. City Council decided, "We want a jail sentence possible for public intoxication." Made that change, and it's six months in jail, maximum that you can do for a public intoxication. After we did that, the state came along and made it so for a first, pedestrian under the influence, it's punishable by a fine only. And I think even for a second. I think you have to get to a third.
So, then we're out of compliance.
We're not out of compliance. We can have our own laws. I mean, it's home rule, this is our own stat, our own ordinance. It's just...
And they can be stricter?
It depends if it's something, that gets into a whole long discussion, and I won't do it here. Okay, I think we move on from this, but I think it's something worthwhile to think about in terms of how we wanted to find habitual drunkard down the road. Again, if this is something that we end up having a legislation on, we'll definitely make sure that there's going to be three readings of an ordinance, and you can come and kind of tell us your thoughts. Going on to the next item, if we're ready to go. I think this one is basically a wash. I don't think we have anything really for follow-up from staff on this, unless you guys have some great ideas and come back to us with one. All right, next one then. Ordnance reporting underage and obviously intoxicated individuals. I'll speak on this one, too. How does that sound, Ms. Harris?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't have a report for that.
So, this is something that actually came about from Sheridan, and came about from discussion from the DUI Task Force. We have an individual in the audience from the DUI Task Force. Maybe we could start by just having you come up and introduce yourself, and just kind of what the DUI Task Force has been working on, if you don't mind. I am looking at you. Don't make me quote Clark Gable. Right, here's looking at you, kid.
Your Honor, council members, my name's Pete Abrams. I am the law enforcement liaison for the YDOT Highway Safety Office. I know that's a mouthful. Essentially, what I am is I'm the interpreter from YDOT to law enforcement statewide. I go to every police department, sheriff's office in the state, where I'm tasked with interpreting everything from the new YDOT crash reports, to data and driver services, to grants for high-visibility enforcement, et cetera. And then I have a great deal of freedom to do other things with, within the scope of my work, which, one of which is to reduce impaired driving fatalities. If I have just maybe five quick minutes, I can give everybody a lesson. Tana was kind enough to put together some statistics, which hopefully you've all had a chance to peruse. I won't, I won't, statistics are important, they tell stories, but let me just give you a brief history of the Fremont County DUI Task Force. In 2015, I was a brand-new baby LEL, LEL being the acronym for Law Enforcement Liaison. Previously, I did, I was 25 years law enforcement. I did five years at the Natrona County Sheriff's Office, and I was with the Casper Police Department for an additional 20 years. I retired in 2014. I was required, or I was recruited by YDOT to come to work to build a liaison program. After about a year, I was concerned with the amount of involvement in agencies throughout the state in enforcing impaired driving. And so, I proposed some task forces around the state. I ultimately reached six counties. I was doing it in Fremont County, which started in 2015. Was doing it in Natrona County, Sheridan, Campbell, Sweetwater, and a couple other counties that are Converse, for example. And they were simple. We would follow the, the calendar, the enforcement calendar that the National Highway Transportation Safety Administration puts out, and, you know, the chief will be familiar with this. But essentially, we contract with law enforcement, using federal funds to go out and do impaired driving enforcement and seatbelt enforcement. And this follows a national calendar. So, impaired driving, for example, one of the key events is August crackdown, which is an outdated term, which was essentially Labor Day, and then this would work through to the big one, which was always the holiday enforcement, you know, which happened from basically Thanksgiving to New Year's. And the agencies would do this, but there would be really no coordinated effort amongst agencies in similar demographics, i.e. counties, working with municipal police departments. There was no media. And so, what we do, what we do is I would write an operations order, and I would, for example, Shoshone, Riverton, Lander, the patrol, and I meant Fremont County Sheriff's Office, would go out and work impaired driving over a three-day holiday weekend. I would do a media release ahead of time, explaining to the public that, "Hey, you know, buckle up, watch your speed, don't drink and drive. Law enforcement's gonna be out here enforcing impaired driving." And then I would get all the activity reports from the agencies, and I would put out a press release after the fact, saying, "Hey, law enforcement went out, they made X amount of stops, they arrested so many DUIs, et cetera." Very simple, cut and paste, six counties. And then the pandemic hit. And I was fortunate, I was only shut down for about three months, but for a, a data enthusiast like me, I really had a chance to take a deep dive into the data statewide, which is my responsibility. And I found out through a published report that was done by a law firm, that from 2000 to 2019, a 20-year span, the, the county with the highest per capita impaired driving fatalities in the state was Fremont County. And the county with the highest impaired driving fatality rate per capita in the country was Fremont County, 100 miles down the road from where I live. And I thought about it, and I said, I asked YDOT, I said, "Look, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reformat, reorganize how we do DUI Task Force. And we're, and I want to approach this with a more comprehensive model, based on my experience with what was called the Meth Committee at the Casper Police Department, which is a body that I chaired for years, that still hosts a substance abuse conference in Casper. But we, my chief was fond of saying, although this Meth Committee was targeting meth use and the repercussions of it, that we can't arrest our way out of this. We have to, we have to enlist other individuals and entities and agencies to assist, to do things like what your council is doing here today, discussing, you know, legislation and ordinances to address problems that can influence impaired driving fatalities. So, we're talking about Tana's organization. She was one of the first organizations that I met with, you know, health departments, substance abuse, the courts, local leaders, of course, first responders, and organization, prevention management, these types of organizations. So, I, I went to speak with Tana, and having some experience with this, we got a pretty good gauge of who we wanted to enlist and participate in, in the reformation of the Fremont County DUI Task Force. I also used my other fellow YDOT, we're basically contractors, so the Governor's Council was, was enlisted, our Traffic Safety Resource Prosecutor. We now have a new state judicial outreach liaison who we recruited, Judge Wes Roberts. And I, I got them all together in Casper, and I said, "I want to do one task force. I want to do it where the, where the data says we should do it, and that's Fremont County." And we started in 2021, and we're now entering, finishing our fourth year and moving into our fifth. And I think the statistics that Tana has cited here, based on crash reporting that's tabulated, submitted by the agencies and tabulated by YDOT, that we've had a serious impact on impaired driving fatalities in Fremont County. We figured in the, in the outset, Fremont County was obviously overrepresented in the state as far as impaired driving fatalities. And we, we figured out very quickly, if we could reduce impaired driving fatalities in Fremont County by half, we could reduce impaired driving fatalities statewide by a quarter. And we've done that. It hasn't been easy. We're still growing. We've, we've brought in, as a result, some, some best practices, namely WRTA, and, you know, big shout-out to Gary. Gary was instrumental in bringing us to FCA all those years ago, and then subsequently getting a grant for WRTA to run, essentially, a service that is not provided in, in your area, because you don't have a, a very full, you don't have a taxi service, you don't have ride share. I still test it. I come here, I stay in Lander, I stay in Riverton, I try to catch an Uber. It's just non-existent. WRTA has filled that gap. It's taken, especially at the events. You know, I attended the pig roast, the Lander Brew Fest, to do outreach and education on behalf of WRTA and the Fremont County DUI Task Force. And in, in particularly, you know, let's just take Lander Brew Fest for an example. You know, they give out hundreds of rides, free, to people who are intoxicated and shouldn't be driving, that are making the right decision. And they're providing a service that takes away the excuse of, of somebody driving impaired. So, sorry for the lengthy history lesson, but I consider, you know, Riverton is, is almost a second home to me. I, I drive through Shoshone at least 36 times a year, on my way up to the basin, or coming to, to meetings here in Riverton. And I really have taken a liking to it. And if I can just take a moment to, to recognize one of these points here, that your city council is now prioritizing traffic safety. It's something that's not sexy to read about. You don't see it in the news very often. I, every, I have an outreach list. I email every police department, sheriff's office in the state. I spam him constantly. And once a year, I, I get the DCI uniform, or DCI report on crime, and I get our yearly report from YDOT on, on traffic, and I compare the fatalities on our roadways to homicides in the state. Would you believe in Wyoming, we kill 10 times as many people a year in, in motor vehicle crashes than we do by homicide or arson? So, an average year in Wyoming, there's 13 homicides in this state. In an average year in Wyoming, there's 130 deaths on the highway. And we've been in 12 or 13 for several years, going back eight or nine years ago in Fremont County. So, we had an overrepresentation. And I, I want to recognize Chief Hurtado for the great work that he's done. Kudos. You know, I, I have, I work with and observe law enforcement agencies throughout the state, and because of my past history in, in law enforcement, I think I have a pretty good gauge of which departments are going in the right direction, and which departments are going in the wrong direction. Your department is going in the right direction. I've seen a culture change, a sea change in attitude, and addressing the priorities, and the importance of the quality of life of the citizens of, of Riverton. And I appreciate the work he's done. He's got two fine young lieutenants that would be somebody that I would be happy to work with or under anytime. So, kudos to you. Appreciate Tana for all the networking she's done behind the scenes and supporting us. So, what's my point here? Well, there's your history lesson on the Fremont County DUI Task Force. Mayor Hudson is also a very integral member of it, because he has a unique perspective on this, because of the titles that he holds. And I, and I, you know, I respect his opinion and always look forward to his input and attendance. So, if anybody here is interested, this young man here has attended our meetings. I'm sorry, I forget his, I forget your name, but we've, you know, we have invited our liquor dealers, and we're starting to get some participation, because it's important to have their input and feedback also, as you know, as you've discussed tonight. So, I guess with that short introduction, I'll see if there's any questions.
Well, and I guess, part of what we had talked about, one of the discussions with the DUI Task Force was the possibility of TIPS training. That was an idea that had been proposed as a requirement for liquor license holders. That's something that had actually ended up happening, and appreciate the council's support on that. There had also been discussion, and I know this has been more from Rich, Rich Adriens, who is the, oh, what's his position, Pete?
He's the facilitator for the Governor's Council on Impaired Driving, yeah.
I was gonna say instructor, but...
Facilitator.
Facilitator. Had noted that, at least in Sheridan, they had had a requirement that if somebody is basically kicked out of a bar for any reason, there was a requirement of notifying the police department. Tell me, I mean, can you speak to that at all?
Not as well as Rich. Here's, here's a little interesting story. Rich and I were supposed to miss this meeting. We were supposed to be hunting in Montana together. Rich is hunting, I'm not. I, I felt ill about a week ago. I felt good enough to come to Riverton tonight, so I'm happy to be here. But Chief Adriens is a great resource. And I say Chief Adriens, because he was, he came to Wyoming and, and was a police chief in Gillette in the early 2000s for, I don't know, six or seven years, and then he moved to Sheridan, where he was chief for another five years. And he does have an extensive catalog and memory on the challenges that he experienced, particularly... on the challenges that he experienced particularly in Sheridan with liquor ordinances. And I'm sure you had him tell the story of, you know, impaired servers at the drive up window, serving, obviously intoxicated patrons at the drive up window. That's a problem, right? When, when a liquor dealer, and I'm giving examples that Rich has cited, you know, where liquor dealer, or I'm sorry, a licensee holder has, you know, multiple convictions for impaired driving, et cetera, et cetera. You can see where that can lead to some, to some problems and difficulties. But Rich unfortunately couldn't make it. He can, he can speak in more detail.
Well, if we do end up deciding to carry this forward and, and we'll make sure he's there.
Yeah.
And we'll make sure that, I don't know what, if you have any ends with the state, just to make sure he doesn't get anything as, in the lottery for where he wants to hunt, so we can get him here.
Yeah. I could use that. I have not drawn a permit in state in three years.
Well, there you go. Well, thanks, Pete. Any questions just in general about, I, I wanted to have someone from the Fremont County DUI Task Force here, just to be able to give a little bit of an introduction, because that's kind of where this had come from.
I don't, I have just one. First of all, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for your efforts. Thank you for everybody you work with, Tana, your organization. The numbers show significantly the decrease that we're seeing because of the work that you guys are doing. So I personally appreciate the work that you have done and wanted to say thank you. Do you have an opinion or a suggestion or comment on like DUI checkpoints?
They're prohibited by state law in Wyoming.
Are they?
Yes. And following what the mayor has commented, I don't think there's any appetite in the legislative, in the legislature to address that.
Okay. That, that was something somebody else had brought up.
It is a proven, you know, NHTSA puts out a big book every so often on, on successful strategies to address impaired driving. And it's listed and it is legal in, in many states, however not in Wyoming. And I do not see that in the foreseeable future. What we rely upon now is, you know, education and enforcement, you know, telling, you know, sending the message out. I'm sure you've seen the, the media releases that Cody Beers puts out. Maybe you've seen me or heard, heard me on County 10, or, you know, speaking with Ernie at, is it YO Today? You know, I do Ernie, Ernie Show a couple of times a year, and then I do County 10 a couple of times a year. And I, you know, obviously I've had many chiefs and members of the sheriff's office also join me. But if I can just mention, I know I singled, singled out Chief Hurtado, but, you know, the, the level of cooperation in the, the growing relations between your other law enforcement agencies in Fremont County impresses me. You know, I, coming from Casper, you know, we had weekly meetings with Mills, Evansville, you know, the sheriff's office, the Highway Patrol. So that was, it wasn't uncommon for us to get together and discuss community wide problems in Atroona County. But when I started coming to Fremont County, I noticed the disconnect between the agencies that no longer exists. You know, there were, we had, we had enforcement administrators in our, in our meetings who said, you know, I haven't, haven't sat down and talked with my counterparts in, in Lander or Riverton or Shoshone. So I also want to give a, you know, my sincere appreciation and thanks to Shoshone PD, Lander PD, the Fremont County Sheriff's Office, the, the, the now two or three year old Dubois Police Department, which was reincarnated after 30 years and participates, and also the Wyoming Highway Patrol. Your troop in Fremont County, I sit in monthly on a meeting with the Highway Patrol. They call it State Stat. And the Colonel presides over it. And every district captain and every division lieutenant goes through all the statistics in their district and in their division, you know, how many fatalities they had, how many impaired driving arrests they had, how many, you know, vehicles were stopped and, you know, trunkloads of narcotics were seized or complaints, traffic stops, et cetera. They're, they're measuring these things, right? Because they're holding their troopers accountable, right? It's important. But your troop here in Riverton, Travis Hauser, has the most productive troop in the state right now. Now that says a couple of things, right? You know, you know, there's a lot of business out there, but, but they're being proactive. I mean, the majority, you know, I can go through our traffic operations here and bore you with that, but most of the stops that are made result in warnings. You know, 2% or 3%, depending on the year, are actually arrested for impaired driving, right? They get plenty of warrants and criminals moving from A to B. But I digress a little bit. I just wanted to take a minute to thank the other agencies in law enforcement that participate.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams. Appreciate you being here and.
Thank you.
Hope you get better.
80%.
80%. Good.
Thank you.
All right. Well, so what had been discussed with the DUI Task Force was basically just the idea of having to report to law enforcement certain things that would occur in your bar or whatever it might be. I think one of them that had been discussed was if somebody's being ejected from your bar for any reason, or if you've refused service to an individual due to visible intoxication, or maybe even somebody who tries to come into your bar and get alcohol and they're too young. Those are three kind of ideas. The best one that I can think of is the need to report if someone is kicked out, or if you've refused to serve to someone due to visible intoxication, and having that be something that's reported. The purpose for that would be, this is someone who you've been able to see, based on your experience as a liquor license holder, you can see this person is drunk. And then they are leaving your bar. And they are leaving your bar one of three ways. One is a taxicab, which I would say our bar owners try to do, and I appreciate that. Another was, is on foot. And if they're leaving on foot and they're visibly intoxicated, they're probably creating a traffic hazard, as well as in violation of public intoxication laws. And the other is by driving. And if they're driving away, then we've got a situation where we're gonna have a DUI. So what the proposal was, was having some reporting requirements in some set of circumstances for liquor license holders. The one that I have the most interest in is reporting if somebody, you're, you're not serving to someone because they're visibly intoxicated. Because I think that that creates an issue where that person can go out there, create a danger to the motoring public, either by driving or walking. So the question then for the council is, is that something we want to explore and consider? Again, recognizing that if this were an ordinance that were proposed, liquor license holders would have the right to come and speak in public hearings and, and discuss it? Or do we just kind of want to say that doesn't make sense?
I think it's worth exploring.
I like the idea of reporting when it's tied to, again, what we already have codified. You're not supposed to serve to a visibly intoxicated person. When you make that determination, make the call. And I think that's as far as we need to take it, really, because otherwise we're putting way too much onus on the establishment.
And that's what I'm not wanting to do. This was part of the discussion previously in terms of having it tie into what we already have in terms of code.
Having an employee have to follow someone out of the establishment to see if they're getting in a cab, to see if they're getting in their car, puts both individuals at danger.
So just giving a description, like name and description, the reason for refusal of service, the date and time and.
If they get a name.
Sure. If they have it.
Yeah. Hey, I just refused service to somebody that I think is visibly intoxicated. That's it.
Councilman Johnson, you were saying something, sorry?
No, it's okay. I, I mean, I understand where you're going with that. I also wonder how that would reflect on their business, you know. I guess if patrons feel they can't go into somebody's business without the, the possibility of them being called in, it could affect their business. And I don't, I don't know that I would agree with that. I think if somebody is causing a disturbance in their facility or their bar and attempts to leave, I mean, that's just doing the right thing and calling them in so they don't hurt or kill somebody. But calling in every individual that they've just cut off or they're not going to serve, I don't think is a, I don't think that I would agree with that.
Yeah. And I, because I see where you're going too. Then why do we have the, in code, that it's illegal to serve someone visibly intoxicated?
Well, it's in code to keep them from serving them further. But it's not in code that they should call the police department and report that they have an intoxicated individual.
No. But it's illegal to serve to an intoxicated individual.
And see where.
Where's, where's the enforcement?
Where I had the issue with it is, so you've just let someone leave your establishment and you can't keep them there, obviously. But you know they're too drunk to serve. And now they might go out and jump in their car. And then we have community that's in danger. So at what point, you know, and I think that our bar owners do a really good job with this. I really do. But I, I kind of like the idea of having some teeth in, you know, in our code. It's been codified. You know, this person is, you know, being unruly or they're so drunk they can't stand up and we're not going to serve them. I think we have a kind of an obligation to that person as well to make sure they get home safely.
Well, and I guess, I, I think about the obligation to the person, and I think that's good. And I think we ought to do that. I also think about people out on the road that are now have a, I don't want to say obstacle, because that sounds like you're not talking about a person, but you know what I mean? There's, there's a significant danger that's presented to the rest of the motoring public that I think notifying the police department about is, is important.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
And perhaps just from our staff's perspective, it would be helpful for us to understand what your expectation is for the police department to do once they receive that report.
Mm-hmm.
That would be helpful. If the expectation is to handle it like a ready report, where the police department would go out and through their patrol process, look for the individual that was just reported on by the liquor license entity. And I think to the, the question of why is the violation on the books, and that is to provide punishment if the licensee continues to serve, then we're able to issue a citation. So if they're continuing, but if they, they stop, they're following the ordinance.
Right.
And then it sounds like you're wanting to then go an additional step, create an ordinance, a process where the licensee would contact dispatch. Dispatch would be made aware that someone was potentially overly intoxicated. And my question is therefore what? What, what do you want your police department to do at that point? And I will bring up a comment that your attorney, Rick Sellers, brought up as we discussed this issue. I think there could be two components to this where, as the mayor mentioned, you may want to treat this almost like a ready report, where someone could be getting in a vehicle and driving under the influence and therefore being a threat to themselves and to others. But you also have a situation where if, if an individual is refused service and asked to leave an establishment, and they walk down the public sidewalk and then go into another liquor establishment, what happens if that liquor establishment decides to serve that individual after the first liquor establishment refused? Is it a way to punish the second liquor establishment to then issue a citation to them for serving to someone who was visibly impaired? And at what point in the court of law would the judge, I guess, go into which liquor establishment was right on refusing or allowing service to that individual?
I think it comes down to what Mr. Sellers was talking about, where there's a clear distinction between enforcing and creating the laws. It's not up to us to, do you know what I mean? It's.
Well, and discretionary on the police department as to what to do.
Yeah.
I agree. We don't need to be sitting there and saying chase down everyone. And I also agree with what Mr. Carr was saying, which is, or maybe it was Ms. Johnson. What are we looking at for numbers here? I mean, how many times?
How often is it happening?
How often are we happening, is it happening that you're saying we're cutting you off? I mean, are we, would this ordinance, and this is where I'd want to have some feedback from the liquor license holders, if this is something that we decide to go with and look at as a possibility, is, are we putting a, a really onerous requirement on a liquor license holder where we're saying, if you're doing this 10 times a day, are you becoming really popular with the police department and calling regularly? So, so I think just saying you're not serving to someone who's visibly intoxicated, you know, if I remember right, part of it with the, with the Sheridan one that we had talked about was the idea of if somebody is being kicked out of the bar for any reason, notifying the police department. That could be something too. So I, I don't know. It's just, it's something that we can look at and decide if we want to finesse it or not. If it's something that just doesn't seem like from the get go that it makes sense, let's not do it. But if we want to try to finesse it and decide if it's worthwhile.
Quick question. This came from a recommendation from the DUI Task Force, correct?
Well, this is basically Rich Adriens was talking about something that they have in Sheridan and said, what if we, and I said, well, we can talk about it at our next, as part of our liquor license holder discussion.
Asking Sheridan, you know, how, how is this working? At what point did you allow the situation to escalate before you trigger the, the requirement to call? I guess I'd like to know what was the impetus behind the recommendation from the DUI Task Force? And then the success rate that they're seeing, where it's in place?
That's where it would be good to have Rich. And he would have that just off the top of his head. And kind of like Mr. Abrams said, it, it'd probably be something worthwhile if we want to look into this and want to get some more details about what they have going on over there. It would probably make sense to have him here and discuss that. And I could also get a copy of the code that they have over there and get it over to the council as well, just to look at for consideration.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I know Chief Hurtado is going to reach out to Chief Cultisca and find out what they are doing currently in Sheridan.
It'd be good. We could discuss that a little bit during maybe his report at the next meeting or a later meeting, once he does that. So kind of mixed on this.
I, I was just going to say, you know, one of the aspects we were talking about earlier with the tracking, I think this would be a good thing. And, and the other thing is, the police department, you know, Kyle had asked what, what were they supposed to do? Well, they have tools in their tool belt. They can administer a BAC if they feel like it's warranted. Or that would kind of fall on them at that point. I just, I don't want it to feel like liquor store owners are being punished in any way. And I'd like to get a lot of input from them on that as well.
I agree.
I think it's worth discussing further, getting some more information from Sheridan, hearing from our liquor license holders and how that will impact them. Those are all good things. But I think if we're serious about being more accountable, cleaning up our area and making some real change, then it very well may be an option.
And this, and I will send this to Mr. Butterfield to send out. This is really the language that they have. And it's, it's pretty simple. It's in 4.5. They don't have as many numbers as we do. We like three numbers in ours, I guess. 4.5, as mandatory standards, each liquor licensee and his or employee shall conform to the following mandatory standards when selling and serving alcoholic beverages. So one of them is, order any patron to leave and depart who is endangering people or property in the licensed establishment. And notify the Sheridan Police Department of any criminal incident as soon as reasonably possible. That's, so anyway, that's for discussion. I also had another one that I kind of put together as a proposal as to what we could do based on what had been discussed. So we can look at that and kind of see where we go from there.
Your Honor, I'm, I'm sitting here reading this report that we got from the Task Force. And it mentions here in the Lander. And it mentions here in the land or liquor ordinance, how the major input to them was a result of the Fremont County Task Force and the data that was able to be provided. So how could we get some access to something similar to that? That would be useful, maybe in trying to figure out.
Tana could get it to us. Either that or Pete.
Thank you.
Pete's the, Pete's the numbers guru. And I haven't attended a DUI Task Force meeting for like...
You're there in spirit.
Three months. I've emailed, though, I will say I email Rich pretty regularly. He could tell you that. All right. Well, this is worthwhile to talk about still, and we'll come up with something that makes sense. And I guess we'll wait for the chief to see kind of what he finds out from Sheridan. If this is something that seems to work well for them, and go from there.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
So I was just looking over this section. Sheridan states, somebody that's obviously intoxicated. And it may be a good idea for us to look into a education program for the city, because the way our statute reads is just intoxicated. There's no definition in city municipal code as far as what is intoxication. So if we default back to the state statute under 331-5233C, the intoxication, basically there's percentages, and anything above a .08 is considered intoxicated, which would be four drinks. So if we were going to compare, just a quick Google comparison, our statute could be interpreted as more restrictive than, than Sheridan. Because they use obviously intoxicated or just intoxicated, which state statute is .08. So maybe good for us to discuss this more and maybe start an education program for the liquor license holders as far as limit maybe four drinks.
All right. Yes, Ms. Groomsmith, you can come on up.
So that is something that my TIPS participants have brought up their concern. They believe it would be really nice if council and law enforcement would participate in a TIPS training. We talk about behavioral cues and intoxication rate factors. We talk about BAC and how a person becomes intoxicated, how quickly, how quickly the liver eliminates alcohol. It would be a really good idea for those that have to be involved in this whole process actually be educated. Thank you.
Thank you, I agree. When's your next class, Ms. Groomsmith?
I don't have it scheduled yet, but I imagine it will be in December. I just had one on Sunday. And if I may, so currently in Fremont County, there are 146 servers who are currently TIPS certified.
That's great.
In Fremont County.
Okay. The next one was discussion regarding drive-up liquor doors, drive-up liquor windows. I think this one you had, Ms. Harris.
I don't have a lot to report on this, Your Honor. I can speak to the fact that the Wyoming statute and Riverton Municipal Code are very similar to each other with regard to drive-up liquors establishments. There is specific language regarding the drive-up area requirements, which states that a drive-in area adjacent to or contiguous to the licensed building may be used by the holder of a retail license. Riverton Municipal Code says from 6:00 AM each day and shall cease all sales, transactions, and close conduct of business promptly at the hour of midnight. The holder of the license shall own the area or hold a written lease for the period for which the license was issued. So it falls right in line with our regular annual licensing terms. No part of the area used for orders, delivery, and making payment shall be more than 40 feet distant from the licensed building. The area shall be well-lighted. No walls or screens may be positioned or situated so as to interfere with observing or checking the part of the area used for orders, delivery, or payment. No order shall be accepted or delivery made to a person under 21 years of age or a person who is visibly intoxicated to any extent. And no part of a publicly owned sidewalk, highway, street, or alley may be used for taking orders. And alcohol or malt beverage, it's a big word right now. Beverages shall be sold and delivered in the drive-in area only in the original unopened package. And consumption of alcohol in the drive-up area shall not be permitted.
Okay. This was something that was discussed briefly. I think was an email that was sent out to some members of the council in regards to saying, wouldn't it make sense just to completely ban drive-up liquor? And I'm not saying I'm for that. I'm, I'm just saying, is this something we want to continue to discuss? Where do we want to go with this? Any thoughts?
I would be in favor of discussing that further. I too received communications from constituents that was in favor of closing drive-up windows altogether. They had indicated that that had been done in Casper, I believe it was. They have closed it down completely. It reduced some DUIs in their area. And it also allows for people to physically see people walking, having the capability of walking into the liquor establishment, whether they're staggering or, or not. And it helped them to be able to determine should they sell to them or not. But I, I do think that it's worthy of further discussion.
Do we have any liquor license holders here tonight that have a drive-up? Okay, a lot of you. This would be a big deal. Why don't you just tell us your name? And like I said, this isn't, this isn't something that we're talking about set in stone. There's going to be other opportunities to discuss.
... several times through different councils.
Your Honor?
And at the same time, if you can look in, if they drive up to the window, we can see if there's a carload of kids there. You can't see that if they're out in the parking lot. We don't know if they're buying something, taking them back out there. I, I'd say 60% of my business comes through the liquor. I mean...
Through the window?
Through the drive-up window.
Okay, that's good.
You know, I, I completely disagree with not being able to sell there, because we call in more ready reports than anybody in the county. I, I'm sure anybody that comes through there, you know, whether, what it is, it'd make it easier on our people not to have to serve them. But we can tell who's in the car, how intoxicated they are. We don't sell to them. I think we're probably...
Okay.
More watch them more than anybody.
Well, it's good to know that this is going to be something that we'll want to make sure we have a lot of discussion about. And I appreciate that you're here.
Definitely is.
And I hope, I hope that, we don't want to get too much into discussing it, because we're just kind of talking about, are we going to discuss it going forward? Is this going to be something we want to consider?
I, I would hope you would consider that, because you can see who's in the car.
Okay.
Who you're selling to.
If we do come up with a proposed ordinance for this, I'd just ask, I mean, everybody that just raised their hands, please make sure you're there so we can discuss and see kind of what kind of impact this would have on you, positive or negative, right?
I'm Rafael Delgado, I'm with River City Rendezvous. We have a drive-up window. And I would say a significant portion of our business comes through that window. I would say upwards of 30%. When people come, we look for ID, we look for any kind of visible, you know, indications of intoxication. But we have a lot of elderly people, we have people with infirmities. They're, they can't actually walk out of the car themselves. Sometimes they're driven by another family member who is an adult, but bringing that person in. And quite frankly, anybody who's going to get impaired drinking and driving, they could do just as easily buying a package, walking in and leaving. I don't think it makes a difference. Now, the business I purchased survived during the pandemic because of the drive-up window. It would be a significant hit if we didn't have that. And the hours are fine. We make certain that we check IDs, we have it on videotape. We have, we don't sell to impaired people, and it's never really been a problem.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Delgado. All right, so Councilwoman Johnson, you're saying would make sense to keep talking about this? Anyone else?
I would like to.
I think it makes a lot of sense.
At least discuss it.
Yeah. And especially if we're not, you know, first one through the wall is always the bloodiest. If we're not the first one through the wall, other cities have done this. They've seen documentable decreases in DUIs. That's worth taking a look at.
Well, I'd be very curious. If this is something that we have had in Casper, I'd like to, I'd like to consider that and, and look into that. I'd be curious also from the business owners in Casper, what kind of, you know, has this made a hit? I guess it's interesting, and it's easy enough to say that a certain percentage of your business comes from people at the drive-up window. But I don't know that I would necessarily say that means you're not going to have that business. But it's hard to say that from up here, right? I'm not the one that's down there in the trenches, so to speak, doing all the work. So I think it'd be a worthwhile discussion to see what impact this has had on other communities that have done it and...
A lot of ladies don't like to walk into a liquor store. And they'll drive up to the door, they'll buy a six-pack and they'll go to bed or whatever.
Right.
I think there's a lot of that.
Yeah, okay. Well, I think it would, I think it would make sense to talk about it and, and kind of get some of that information as we, as we talk about it going forward, find out what communities have done this, what have been the results. And I'd, I'd like to know what kind of results it has been had on the liquor license dealers if we can, as much as possible. And then we can come in and discuss it and have everyone who... I'm really glad, I, I, I'm assuming that some of you are here because of this item primarily. Is that accurate? I'm seeing some nods, okay. Okay, I can understand the concern. We'll talk about it as we go forward. And we'll make sure that, you know, it's well advertised. If we do have a proposed ordinance, that'll have three readings. And I'll tell you what, right now, even though we're only supposed to, we only are required to have one reading as a public hearing, generally speaking, we allow the public to speak even at later readings. So if you don't get notice of it right away, come to second reading, come to third reading, email us. If you have any thoughts about it right now, feel free to email us after the meeting. Let us know, okay? Great. All right. If we could find out a little bit more about that and then come back with some discussion, maybe we can find out what Casper has done and see what kind of impact it's had, both on the liquor license holders and on DUIs, if you can say. I mean, that's such a difficult thing to say.
Your Honor, we can definitely do that. I'd also bring your attention to Statute 125302, which is Determination to Forbid or Restrict. This provides pretty clear provisions for you as a governing authority to consider. In quick reading, it says you can restrict this if, one, traffic conditions or two, physical circumstances hinder law enforcement officers in, in reviewing the area. Then it says by resolution, you would restrict this right. But we will reach out to Casper to see how they did it. But I, I just make reference to that very in statute, because that's where it defines how you can restrict it.
I would say if we did that by resolution, I'd want to make sure that, not just having it be in general terms be advertised, but I would say we'd want to make sure that we're letting any of the liquor license holders that could be affected notified in particular. So, and that is a little bit of an interesting one, because it's talking more about specific locations, not just drive-up liquor. But you're saying, due to issues with this drive-up liquor establishment, we're saying you cannot be doing that. I would think we'd want to make sure that's advertised well and that they're notified and able to speak about it. Okay, I appreciate bringing that up, Mr. Butterfield. Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for attending. I hope it wasn't too boring. Excitement abounds. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Carr, second by Councilwoman Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We are adjourned at 8:36 PM.